I think I've got a hearing.
As you were, carry on. I'll be in the area all day.
Yeah, I do. I've got a hearing.
Having no point in time with 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Tour Order. Please rise for the pleasure of leisure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, would you please take the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chair McCormick is present.
Thank you, sir. I would accept a motion for the approval of the April 27th, 2021 committee meeting minutes.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hear no nays, ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, would you please present a treasurer's report if appropriate?
Thank you, Chair Gregory. The treasurer's report for the corporate fund for the month of April, the beginning balance is $19,734,868. We took in total receipts of $9,323,719. We had total disbursements in the month of April totaling $10,875,432, which lift the corporate fund ending balance for the month of April at $18,183,155. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. I have been informed that OBM will be sending out a report to us tomorrow, and we can ask any questions about that next Tuesday. All right. Are there any presentations? I'm not aware of.
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have the ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clark, could you please read those ordinances?
2018-110, 2020-464, 2020-538.
All right, is there anyone who... I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I don't know if we've ever had reconsiderations on throwing back into committee, but I thought that they just immediately go to debate on the council agenda.
I'm sorry. If that's addressed to me, yes, that would be the proper thing. I'm not sure if just as a matter of convenience on the way the agenda's put together, but it should be for debate at the council meeting. There's really no action for the committee to take.
I don't mind putting it forward, but I just...
It would appear automatically. And I don't know if it's just a matter of the way the computer program is set up and we just put it on. Okay. So it should be reflected like we talked at the last meeting.
Okay.
It'll simply show up as a debate item for city council action.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you're exactly correct.
Thank you, Corporation Council. Is there anyone else?
Do we want to...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, do we want to pull out? Excuse me, 2020-538 first.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to pull out 2020-538. Any discussion?
Yes. Is it ready?
Corporation Council.
The developers are here, and I think it's the best opportunity to get some questions answered.
There is, just if you would like. The agreement is in, excuse me, is in final form so far as the various issues, so there are no amendments required. I think we had talked about it briefly, I think, perhaps at the last meeting or before. So it is in final form, is ready to go forward for debate or action at the pleasure of the council.
No further adjustments at this time?
That is correct.
Any amendments could be done through a floor amendment? Thank you.
Will there be anyone else?
We need to... That's out, so we'll act on it next.
Do we want to...
Bat phone.
Hello, Mr. Arnold, hold on, please.
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Chair, are we...
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you. Just for clarification, is the motion for discussion or debate?
I think we should move it to debate.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is for debate?
Yes.
All in favor?
Usually we...
Go ahead, Alderman McMenamin.
Mr. Chair, do we want to have a discussion before we vote?
Well, we're not voting tonight, we're just...
Okay. Is there anybody?
Right. It's fine. We have people here, we might as well...
So is there anybody from the crowd, if appropriate, that would like to speak to this Legacy Sports Center? Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. I went through this agreement. There's a lot of Page Fours, by the way, I don't know what's going on with that, but it kind of got me confused. One of the concerns I have with this agreement is that we got this in a phased approach, and I'm concerned about that. What it does is it puts both the city and the developer in a tough situation. It's no secret that there's going to be election in two years or a year and a half, whatever it is now.
Eighteen months.
And eighteen months, thank you, Alderman. I'm not counting the days down, let's just put it that way. My concern is if we get a new council in, they can walk away from this agreement, and it puts the developer in a bad situation. Likewise, we're putting a lot of money up front, which is another concern on the initial phase, and I'm concerned that, you know, the developer could walk away just like the city could. I think that either one of two things need to happen. We do a one-phased approach, or we do an approach to where the city cannot back out of it, the future councils cannot back out of it, and/or if the developer, we have to protect ourselves to where if that second phase, which is the, according to this, is all the indoor part, which to me, that's what makes this thing huge. An eight-field, eight-multi-purpose field park is not that big of a park. We've got... They're all, they're around, and it wouldn't make that any more special to bring people in. So I would, I'd just like to have some answers on why we went to the two-phased approach, and, you know, why we can't do a single phase, and make sure that we're protected and developers protected, because I think that that's extremely important for both parties. That's my first concern.
Mr. Chair, I...
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you. I said, you know, last time that we were talking about this, and I hate to repeat myself, but the, my concern is that we get far along in a project, we've been reimbursing the developer or expending city funds, and then we don't have a project. Before I get into that nitty-gritty, if I could suggest, I think it would be advantageous for us all to hear the developer kind of outline what is in the agreement, what is going to be proposed, and then maybe we could ask our questions then as a suggestion. I just, I think, and maybe some of my questions and concerns will be answered then, but maybe not.
I totally agree. So I would, if it's okay with the council?
Yes.
Mr. Whoever would like to come up and speak on behalf of this?
Mr. McCormick.
So I guess I will start off with making sure that we all understand...
Can you do, do me a favor? Can you state your name for the record?
Dirk McCormick, and I'm with Legacy Park Sports LLC.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
So first, I'll start off with making sure that everybody recognizes that the reason why we're here is because the typical sports complex is owned by municipalities. They don't make money. The pricing model is based upon municipalities wanting to put what I refer to as butts in beds. They want to create economic activity. If you go back and look at the SFA market study that they did before we became involved, the average outdoor complex loses $585,000 a year before interest, reserves for replacement, and, I'm missing one other thing, oh, property tax. So they lose money by design. The indoor complex does actually make money on average, they make about $640,000. If you combine the two, they lose $55,000 before all of those things. That's why we're here, because that's who we're competing with. So our pricing model will cause us to have minimal profit, so we can't cover those expenses. So what we have done is create a plan where we get Springfield, Illinois, a sports tourism complex without any financial risk to the city, and with them contributing up to half of the cost through tax revenues that are being generated through the complex. Why we're looking at a phasing approach, and this is something we worked through with the mayor's office and Corporation Council, on trying to create something that was acceptable to both the city and that we could work with. And so what we have is a Phase 1, which is the outdoor, and Phase 2, which is the indoor. We've gone with the outdoor because actually you get your biggest bang for your buck for economic activity through the outdoor, not through the indoor. And Jim Arnold from SFA could probably address that better than I can, because they're the experts on sports tourism complexes. The program that we generated here with the city was we get a portion of the increase in sales tax, we get a portion of the hotel motel tax, which I think someone from the Springfield Hotel and Lodging Association is here to address that. We have asked for a property tax freeze on the city's portion, and we've asked for an extension of the business district going forward. And I'm not sure if I'm going, if I'm covering everything that you want to be covered, but I'm happy to answer questions. Alderman Conley.
Alderwoman Conley. Good job, though, I like your outfit, so that's a good job. That's a good job.
There's the losing mic. No, thank you. And I understand that, although I guess I have a couple of questions now based on what you said. So please clarify, you said that the outdoor portion tends to not make money, but the indoor portion does?
Operationally, yes.
Operationally, and yet the most bang for your buck is the outdoor portion?
Yes. It generates the most economic activity.
So you're talking about, when you're talking about impact to the city, you're talking about hotel seats, hotel beds, people going to restaurants, that sort of revenue?
Yes.
Okay. What sort of tournaments do you envision coming?
Yeah, that is probably a question...
Is that, okay, then I'll go back to developer then.
Sure.
One of my bigger concerns is the $250,000 that the city is on the hook for, for ongoing Is that for the entire project? Is that just for Phase 1?
That's for Phase 1.
And what are you maintaining for $500,000 a year?
Most of that money, if not all that money, will likely go to reserves for replacement, primarily the turf.
How often does a turf field have to be replaced?
Typically, 12 to 15 years.
So 12 to 15 years?
Do we have to replace the turf?
But we're putting $30 million into just Phase 1 of this project, right?
Yes.
Okay, so originally when this was brought to us, my understanding was that it was like a $65 million project for the entire deal.
Yes.
So what are you envisioning coming back to ask the city for, for Phase 2?
Well, today, we're looking at a $41 million project, so we're looking at $24 million, but clearly that's going to be something we're going to have to come back and say, this is, just like what we're doing for Phase 1, we're coming back before we close on financing and everything goes into effect here. We're coming back to you with a complete package of what the exact cost is for everything, what it is we're getting in the way of our financing package, and so you're reviewing all that, and we'll be doing the exact same thing for Phase 2.
So what do you anticipate Phase 2 will cost?
$24 million is the number we're looking at today, I believe.
Is that the total cost, or is that the cost to the city?
That's, no, that's the total cost. The number of $65 million for the project total hasn't ever actually changed. Now, when we get into bidding...
I mean, I have not done high school math for a while, but I think 60 million for Phase 1 and 24 million for Phase 2 is a little more than 65 million.
So...
So I just need some clarification on that.
My name's Steve Lucre, and I'm also part of the development team. So in the study that SFA did, you've got all those copies, you've got the exhibits. $66 million, what's the construction cost? That's to build it. Did that include land? Did that include the reserves? So 66 million is what it costs to construct it. So when you say what is going to be doing, in the exhibits that you have, the outdoor, I think, was 28 million, the indoor was, the outdoor was 36 million, the indoor was 28 million. Construction only. That's not interest, that's not land, that's not anything. That's in the study that we are basing this off of. When we originally started with the mayor, we said, where are we at with this thing? This is not a typical deal. This is something different than what Jim Arnold or SFA typically does as far as how much percentage is put in by municipality. Jim, is Jim on the line?
Yes.
Frank? Okay. Why don't you cover how these are set up with Sandusky and the others? It kind of gives a better background of how this is structured, and then I can get into how the incentives, we got to the incentives, if that makes sense.
Give me one second. Alderman Donlin?
I can wait.
And actually, if I could, could everyone who's speaking just introduce themselves, just so we know, since we've got in person and on the phone, just so we know who's talking?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So just really quick, Steve, I think everyone just wants to know, what is the bottom line? What is the city paying for?
Whatever the incentives produce through the hotel motel tax and the incremental increase in the sales tax at Legacy, whatever those produce, up to a maximum of 50% of the total cost. That includes the construction, the land, everything. So if the total bill is $80 million with interest and everything else, the most that the city could put in is $40 million. If the incentives produce less than that, the city isn't on the hook for the shortfall, the developer is.
So just to be clear, the city is not taking money out of our general revenue fund and giving it to you? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Alderman Donlin.
Mr. Lucre, good to see you again, it's been a long time. Do you, does the team prefer a phased approach, as is being proposed this evening? Or doing it all at once?
I don't know that it matters, because the reason we got to a phased approach is because we got a cap that was put on the maximum that we were willing to put in. So when you put that cap in there, and you say, we wanted this, and it doesn't include interest and anything else, I'm not going to sit there and say, you know, here, we're going to do this, and it's going to cost the city 12%, and we're going to, that's just not what's going to happen here. What's going to happen is, we're going to go through the phased approach, Jim Arnold will be able to tell you why it makes so much sense, it's going to be phased regardless. The phasing's going to happen is, we're going to do the outdoor first, it's going to produce so much, it's going to get this tax incentives up, it's going to get the hotel motel rooms, and then we're going to come back with the indoor. And Jim will be able to say this, but I think the outdoor is 60% of the cost, but 70% of the economic impact will be, it's just, it's pure facts. The baseball teams have more players, soccer teams have more players, so on and so forth.
I understand the logic behind not doing it all at once, like, meaning like, okay, you flip the switch and you're constructing everything all at once. However, is it, is it less expensive of a project if you did it all at once and didn't, quote, phase it in, have to come back into council again, and so on and so...
I don't, you're going to put a cap number that's going to be there, so the cap, you're going to be in the neighborhood regardless. So if you say a not-to-exceed number now is $30 million all in, that includes interest and everything else, and you say, what's the not-to-exceed number, I'm going to tell you it's somewhere around $54 million not-to-exceed number for the city today. The only problem that I have is, I'm going to be financing this thing in five years for the indoor, you tell me what interest rates are going to be. So when you lock in a variable, like it's being asked by us at the mayor's office of saying, here's the cap, here's a not-to-exceed, but you're locking in an interest rate, which is in construction cost, it's a not-to-exceed for us to get started. We're going to come back in six to eight months and say, here's what we're building, this is what, how long it's going to take us, and this is how it's going to perform. And we, and the experts are the ones that are directing us. It's not us, it's SFA, who does these all over the country.
And I apologize for asking what seems like, might seem like elementary questions, but really just got exposed to this, the details of it, that is.
No, I understand.
What, I guess what I'm asking is, what's the, what's the reason the developer, when you come back for Phase 2 to the city, what will you be asking for? Will it be, in essence, an amendment to the development agreement? If a cap's going to be the same, what do you ask?
The cap, it will not be the same from what, you're capping it today at a much lower number by phasing it. You're only capping it for Phase 1, which is capped at the $36 million, I think is what the number is, which, let's, the math for it would be, so $36 million is what the study shows their estimate of cost is for the outdoor.
Okay.
Add inland to that, which is basically $2 foot, it gets to about $41 million. Divide that in half, city's portion, 50%, up to 50%, $20.5 million, put the interest carry into that, somewhere between $9 and $10 million gets you to 30. Add $250,000 a year for 20 years, that gets you another nearly $6 million, that gets you to the $36 million.
Yeah.
Indoor's complete.
But what I'm confused about is, is if the cap is now a number, 30-whatever million dollars, and you come back and the cap gets raised, really the bottom line is, is it cheaper for the city to do, for you to ask once or twice? That's really what, and...
Doesn't matter, I mean, truly, the cap is whatever the incentives produce.
I understand that.
So I don't know that it's going to change, I don't know that it's going to change. And if what we think's going to happen with the outdoor being successful, we're going to be coming back in the next two to three years for the indoor, or we're going to come back to the city and say, do you want us to build the indoor? Or would you rather us build more outdoor? Or is there something else that you, because the money is, it's in these coffers that have been produced, we can't just pull that money out. It has to be, just, you know, like the business, we have to ask, it's an eligible expense, it has to be signed off on what we're building.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman Conley, I believe, for that, and then DeSenzo, Hanauer, and we'll go to the gentleman on the phone.
Thank you, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't quite done with the questions earlier. And I'm just trying to get a handle on this. So we got an update today that says that Phase 2 of the project will be submitted if you're generating sufficient tax funds and Phase 2 is financially feasible. So what in your mind is going to be submitting, generating enough income for you to come back? Does that mean that full half of cost has to be generated?
I think we'll make an educated guess on whether or not financially it makes sense, yes.
I mean, you understand...
So if the outdoor covers all the outdoor cost, and we think it will, plus the hotels and what's kicking in from the city side, we're going to come back to the city and say, here's where we're at. Yes, I mean, we fully expect that we'll be able to build both First Phase and Second Phase. The capping of the number when you say phasing 1 or 2, it's really, it's a cap number that's caused that. When we went through the discussions with the mayor and everything else, he said, here's my top dollar, I won't go above that. Well, we can't get to that number when you include land. If you want everything built, that's not a, that's not a realistic number.
So it's kind of a moving top dollar then, isn't it?
No, it doesn't have to be. You guys, we were satisfied with it being this number, we weren't satisfied with the number that we needed being here, so we said, we're willing to do a phased approach. We're just ready to get started.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory. So, and of course, I would like this to happen and be a fabulous success, so please understand, I think it's a great idea. And I say that as someone who's been to a lot of sports facilities in my time. But if it fails, it goes under, you've got the, the outdoor portion has been completed, and maybe you decide, you know what, this is not making the money we thought it would, we're not going to do Phase 2, and we're out. What happens to that then?
The incentives stop, city's still at no risk.
Who owns the property then?
Probably the bank.
Okay.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Thank you, Chair. I think the fear here in the phased approach is that we don't know who's going to be sitting in these seats in two years. And we want to make sure that if we're going to vote on something of this magnitude, that it is, it comes to completion. So I think that's the big fear in the phased approach. If we're going to support this and decide to pass this, we need, I don't think we like the phased approach. I think we want it all to be one agreement that is voted on, and I could just be speaking for myself, but that's, that's the vibe I get from everybody up here, is that this phased approach is problematic.
I think that's to you, Mayor.
Give me one second, Mr. Mayor, give me Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I think, and thank you, Alderwoman, you're, I think you're right. Here's the way I look at it. First of all, one agreement, so we know what our dang costs are. We got, this is, according to this agreement, we don't know what our costs are going to be overall. If we go to the two-phase, or, you know, build both, $250,000 a year from the city, only on Phase 1? No. No. I can't vote for that. I'll go 250 for the whole, if both phases are done, but not, not come back and say, well, we need another 250, so there's another, there's a half a million we're paying? No. We need to know, and our constituents deserve to know what we are getting, how much it's going to cost them from start to finish. We need one phase. So we have all those numbers, interest, everything, you know? It's like buying a car and then coming back, say, well, we're going to buy the wheels, got to buy the wheels separate, but we don't know what that cost is going to be. And if this shuts down after Phase 1, we've spent money on turf and everything out there that goes to nothing. It has to be a two-phase, it has to be a single-phased approach, and we got to know all the numbers. None of this cat and mouse game, it's got to be, we got to know the numbers. We owe it to the city and our constituents that they know what we're spending overall.
Okay. Give me, give me one second, Mr. Lucre, I want to go to Mr. Alderman Proctor, and I want to go to the mayor, and then we'll come back, because I'm sure they got some things while you're up here to talk about.
I think I'm teeing this up to what they're going to respond, what the mayor's going to respond here, but my question is that, so it sounds like you want to do one phase if the cap was higher, right?
Yes.
So...
Well, it makes no difference to us. We came with, when we talk about phases, it's going to be a phased construction approach. We've got to come back each time and tell you exactly what we're building and what it's going to cost before we ever start a project out there. So you know exactly what we're building, what it's going to cost, and the schedule we're going to keep. As far as the 250, it's a reserve fund. For your 250 you put in, we have to put in 250. For us to get that money out, we have to tell you what we're using it for. It's not for dirt to get a boat, or somebody to pick up trash, it's to maintain and make it sustainable.
Mr. Lucre.
So, I guess, to kind of bounce off Alderman Donlin's question about, because if you want, it sounds like you want to do all together, but you're going to build it in phases, as a good developer would do, of course, but then if you come to the city, if you come to the city for a second part, for the second phase, it's like a speed bump, it kind of slows things down. So wouldn't you, as a private business person, want to know everything that's in front of you right there, what you're going to deal with for the whole thing, rather than come, because we might say no the next phase, you know, we might be getting...
The incentives don't change.
I get that, I get that.
And that's the only place that we get money from the city for.
But I just want to ask for now that you want to do one phase. It sounds like you want to do one phase, but it sounds like the administration doesn't want to do one phase.
When you say one phase, we're good with a one-phase approach in the developers' agreement. Let's not confuse a phasing of the project with a phasing of construction.
Sure, 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 sure.
Absolutely, we're good with either way. Just, let's go, I'm ready to start.
Your preference is do it all together?
Our preference is whatever is the ability for us to get started. If you guys can agree on a one phase, I'm good with that. If you want to do everything covered, I'm good with that. Either way, does not matter.
All right, thank you.
And the numbers are the numbers. The numbers that are, these are coming from... And the numbers are the numbers, the numbers that are, these are coming from, isn't from us. The study's in front of you guys, it was all given to you, the numbers are the numbers of what the estimated cost is. We'll come back with a final design of this thing and say, here's what it is, and you guys have the choice, right then or there. If you're not happy with what we're building, or designing, or anything else, say no, thank you, we don't want to give you the incentives for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think we should allow Mr. Arnold to speak from SFA.
Hold on, one, one, I got it.
I'll answer any questions that need to be answered after that.
Okay, give me one second. Mr. John?
Uh, yes. No matter whether you're building in one phase, or two phases, or three phases, the bottom line is, you have to construct the outdoor phase first.
Yes.
And that may take two years.
It could.
So, what we're talking about is semantics. They have to build it in two or three phases. I mean, the outdoor case, phase comes first, and I've been to a lot of these baseball tournaments, although it was 20 years ago, and they were, like, we went to Memphis, and they had, the whole city of Memphis had a sports complex, there's not sports complex, it's baseball diamonds, and, and Cincinnati, and they were from all over the country, Seattle, New York, Arizona. The thing of it is, if you have it all in one place, it's a much better deal, and people enjoy that. And, believe me, these baseball teams pack a lot of money. I know it cost us a lot of money to go there, so I think it's a good deal.
Let, let's hear from the gentleman on the phone.
Mr. Arnold, you're up.
All right, well, so I will, I will try to address a lot of the things that I've, I've heard most of the comments, and appreciate the, you know, the thought and time that everybody's put into reviewing this, and, you know, the insights you've put in, and so I'll try to address some of the things that came up. If I miss anything, or if I missed anything just by not being able to hear, please feel free to, to shoot any questions to me. First and foremost, you know, again, you know, with Steve and Dirk, we, we would say, you know, between phasing or doing it all, whatever works with the city. Again, the, the biggest thing is, what can, what can we do to get this process started in order to market to teams, put it out there that this is getting built, so that we can get it out there before others in the region do? There's plenty of examples, we manage a number of venues that went all at once, in our indoor/outdoor first phase, everything all at the same time, they're incredibly successful. We have a number, a number of venues that we have developed, the outdoor park, and then the indoor has come after, the mo, you know, once the model was proven, and those complexes are incredibly successful. So there's not necessarily a right or wrong answer for, you know, in totality, it's more for what the appetite of the public entity and the public-private partnership looks like. So from a phasing, Cedar Point Sports Center, we started with the outdoor complex, and I believe you guys have all seen those impact numbers, and so it's, you know, as of 2019, so not taking into COVID, you know, we were over 50,000 room nights there, economic impact of almost $40 million. And that helped the city and the county understand the impact of youth sports, which helped them develop and, and have the confidence to put the taxes and, and the public money behind the indoor facility. Gatlinburg and Pigeon Forge, another great example of phasing, Panama City Beach, another great example of phasing outdoor than indoor, and then Limp Point Sports in Atlanta, another great example of the, the outdoor proving the impact in order to fund the indoor. Yeah, we, we manage Hoover, in Hoover, Alabama, the Hoover Met, it all came at once, and it's incredibly successful. So I do, I do just want to say, there, there's not a right or wrong answer, and we can be successful either way that we go, but we would recommend, the ones that have been successful phasing, have taken the approach of doing the outdoor first. And there's a number of reasons, you know, a lot of that, there's more impact driven by outdoor complexes, more room nights, and quite candidly, from, from an appearance standpoint, and from your residents and people who see it and see the activity, there's also the piece of, when an outdoor complex is filled, there's more people in the community, and visibility wise, you drive by that complex and you say, man, look how full that is. You know, sometimes when you drive by an indoor complex when it's full, you can't tell that it's full. So there's real statistical and quantitative numbers that back it up, but there's also some qualitative side to it as well. You know, one of the questions, I think one of the comments that came out early was talking about size of facility with, with eight fields, so, you know, eight to 10 fields. One of the things we do want to make sure everybody understands and is aware of is, while we're talking about eight to 10 multipurpose fields, we, we use the term multipurpose very differently. I think, you know, old school thought is that a multipurpose field is a rect, a rectangle, that can have lacrosse and soccer on it. When we're looking at multi-sport, those eight to 10 fields can be transitioned to be 16 baseball fields, or up to 20 to 24 youth soccer fields, 30 flag football fields. So these are true multipurpose spaces that on any given weekend, you know, that size facility, eight to 10 fields, can take up to 96 baseball teams, 120 soccer or lacrosse teams, 100 to 106 softball teams. And so, you know, while, while it doesn't bring in the 300-team tournament, from an investment standpoint, I would tell the city, you don't want a 300-team tournament, because that will fill up cities an hour and a half away. We would much rather put 60, 70, 80 to 110 teams in every single weekend, because then we can make sure that hotel rooms are staying within the city, that spending is staying within the city, and then that is what starts to dictate demand. And so when programs sell out, all of a sudden, you know, summer programs are easy. When summer programs sell out, you start to shift back into fall and spring and fill your shoulder seasons more easily, so that this venue is truly creating year-round economic impact across the board.
So, I, I got a quick question, just, just on that, I was really waiting for somebody from this reference, from this company. So my, my question would be, we, we talk about Sandusky, Ohio, and the, the one that's there, I know this is modeled after that, but I'm just curious, with, with Sandusky, Ohio being a, you know, population of 28,000, and outside of some bigger cities, has a big water park, I, I just think our city is in a different situation than that. I, I get it, I, you know, there is great facilities in Schaumburg, and, you know, throughout the state, so, and we do have a lot of tourism, but why, if, if most of the facilities that you have done around the country are, have some type of government, another one in Sandusky, the, the county made a large play in that, so why is our, why is this particular one structured like this to where it's not a, where it's different from what you normally do?
So, I, I caught some of that, I don't know if, if somebody could, kind of, I, you know, was the question, are all of, are all the facilities we build in areas that have destinations, or I couldn't catch the end of the question?
No, but my question is, is, is this, this one, we're, we're saying is unique from what, what you have normally built across the country with participation from, from local government, so why is this one, you know, different? I, I understand that they, you know, we often, governments often get involved because they're not real moneymakers, so...
So, 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 I, I, okay, thank you, I, so it sounds like, what, what's the typical structure around the country in terms of public-private partnerships?
Right.
So, nine out of 10 are, you know, the, the traditional model, which still kind of is the most common model, is public, fully publicly funded facilities. We see them funded through a variety of ways, through hotel tax, food and beverage tax, you know, sometimes you'll see it through, you know, local property tax or sales tax, that's probably a distant option, but behind more tourism-driven taxes. TIF districts, PID districts, those type of tax abatement-type structures, you know, and in those scenarios where they're publicly funded, those projects also come with where the public enters the act of the backstop for operations as well. So they're funding the facility, they're also funding the losses or, or the subsidy if required, and in return for that, what the city or counties are looking for is direct spending and economic impact, and, and, and an increase in taxes that can show a return on investment. So, return on investment never comes from the operations of these facilities, it simply doesn't, they don't operate like that, you know, there's, there's a number of examples around the country that break even operationally, some of the most successful venues, but even that does not include the debt payment to, to, to support the facility, that's just breaking even on operations. And, and so I would say, a majority of our projects that we work with, we are, we act on behalf of the public entity. So they fund the complex, they build and own the complex, we operate on their behalf, but typically out of a public operating account, in terms of what's funding those operations. And so I would say, you know, when, when Dirk and Steve first reached out to us about Legacy Point, you know, we really had to understand what their vision was and what they were looking to do, because it is not the typical funding mechanism or operating plan behind one of these facilities, to have this much private money behind it, as well as making sure that as we're designing this, we're looking at it in an eye of, hey, we need to make sure that the, these operations can be profitable, because at some point, we're going to be on the hook for those operations, and any losses we'll be on the hook for. So that goes into the modeling of this as well. So, so, you know, that's a long answer too.
Yes.
This is actually a very different model than what's typically out there, and quite candidly, a very public-friendly deal in terms of the structuring and financing of it.
All right, all right, thank you, sir. Alderman Donlan.
Yeah, just to kind of reiterate my, my question from earlier, I think, I think what we're doing is we're, we're, you know, the coun, some of us on the council are confusing construction phasing with coming to the council and asking for assistance, and, so you liken it, liken it to a TV series, you know, we're, we're looking at for you to, we want to invest in the whole season, not come back every episode. And, you know, we know that you're going to have, you know, parts to put together as we go along, and I'm sure I don't want to get in the nitty-gritty of the construction, although it is important to have a schedule, but, so when it, again, reiterate my question from earlier, is it cheaper, is it less expensive, less, less expensive of an investment for the council if you come and ask all at once, or is it more expensive?
I, I don't know that I can answer it today, because the variables that come into play. So, to, to back back up, so when we started this process of why a sports complex, why at Legacy Point, the city did their study and proved that the market was acceptable to this.
It's a great location for it.
Great, well, just the city alone, then said, the invitation was out, developers that want to come forth, they want to pay for the next phase with SFA to figure out whether it worked at a specific site. So we sat down with SFA, said, this is what it is. Early on in the discussions of everything, we knew that the maximum, we made the commitment through these conversations with the mayor early, there won't be more public dollars put into this project than private dollars. That's how we got to the 50%. The issue that comes into play with the capping numbers, the mayor got to a comfort level that says, we're only willing to put in this amount of dollars, but when you have the project and you examine all the dollars, it doesn't get us to a point of saying, okay, if your cap is here, and you take into account what phase one of the outdoor, plus interest, plus land, plus a reserve fund is put in there, your dollar amount, we can stay underneath that, but when you say you want to do the whole project and your cap number is this, I can't, I, I can't make it work. It's, it's just not even feasible. And so when we said, okay, what, how else can we do this? Well, the thought was, okay, can we do phase one and get it so, this is what it's generating, show the success of it, and have the ability to come back and say, we're still asking for the same incentives, we're not changing the incentives, we, we're betting that the incentives will produce more dollars than what we're asking for, but if we cap that number of what we're allowing the incentives to be, I can never build phase two. So it's not so much, does it cost more? The project will only be supported by what the incentives are out there, and that's, you, you guys are aware of what those are.
Mr. Lucre, I, I appreciate that explanation, because I, I did not know any of that. I, I was not aware of the back and forth and the details of the negotiations, I don't think anybody in the council was, maybe Alderwoman DeSenzio was, but that's helpful information. I, I'm not trying to be, uh, get in the way of the projects, I think it has, so, so the merits of this project and the impact in this community and the area as a whole is significant, and this is a historic opportunity for Springfield. And I just, I just wanted to, you know, we, Alderman Hanauer first brought up the idea of, you know, of the, of the, when I say phased approach, I mean, you having to come back to council again and...
No, and I appreciate that.
So we started asking the, the nitty-gritty details about, you know, okay, is it going to cost more, is it going to cost less? I have a better understanding of that, I just got to take a few minutes to hear, to absorb what you said, and...
No, and I, I believe, what you guys are saying, you're, you're making all, you're asking all the right questions and everything else. We've been at this for a year and a half, and tried to had all these conversations, and it's kind of been a moving kind of dialogue. We're following what the experts say. What SFA says, this is what should be built, that's what we're saying. The number that they're producing, that's what we think, it's an estimate. We thought we put a developers' agreement in front of, of the mayor that said, here's all the belt suspenders, everything we can think of, that the city has signed off on everything. The issue that we had was, it's a cap number issue. That's all this is, it's a cap number issue.
We got one more for you, Alderman Hanauer?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I should, and, and thanks for bringing that up, Jim, the, I think it, by saying the phased approach, it, I'm not, I understand the, the approach, the construction phased approach, I understand, I, I completely understand that. What I, what I'm saying is, we need to have one developers' agreement for the whole project, so that we know what the numbers are. I think that's, and, and maybe by saying the phased approach, I didn't want people to think that I was against the construction phased...
I understand.
...approach, but I think we need one agreement for the whole project. I think it does save the city money, because you've been negotiating for how long, and I'm sure Mr. Hortman isn't doing it for the, for free, and, you know, and I'm sure that, that Martin Engineering isn't doing their engineering for free, so the more you, when you have to come back through and as you negotiate with, with whatever administration comes out, you know, you, you could be in another year and a half negotiation, like, like the chairman said, and where it stops it, you know, it, it slows it down. I just think, for us to go further, go, go forward, I would ask that we go to one developers' agreement, I don't know if you guys have had something in the past that you could go back to, make changes, I think that's the, that's the best way to proceed as far as the city's concerned. One question I have for you, and I'm concerned about, is that the first, first, the initial project has to be done, completed by December 31st of 2022. I'm concerned, that's, that's a lot of work to get it done by that time. I know from other projects that, that I'm familiar with, that, I, I don't want to put you in a situation where you can't make the, make the date, I think that would be not fair, number one. Now, we got, you know, a lot of good operators that can get, that can spread dirt and all that, but there's a lot of work to do, laying the, the turf and, and everything else.
Absolutely.
So is that date, is, I mean, are you concerned about that date?
How much longer is it going to get us to have to do a developers' agreement signed off on is, we can't get started until that gets done, we have six months probably to get everything put in place, then we'd start construction. We all know the weather's going to be a variable here, so yes, in the developers' agreement, it calls out, if we have construction delays because of weather, financing, or any of that, we can push that forward. Is it a, is it a realistic number? Jim Arnold, is it a realistic number to build the outdoor phase in how many months?
Uh, so, to give a good example, the Sandusky facility at Cedar Point Sports Center, that outdoor was about a 15-month process, design field, and obviously dealing with very, being right on the shores of Lake Erie, dealing with very similar weather conditions and restraints as, as you guys in, in climate zones as you guys have, so certainly doable. That is, that is going pedal to the metal, and, and, you know, part of that will come down to permitting process and timelines, making sure we go through there, but I believe that that is certainly achievable, and, and don't have a whole lot of concern around that. And what that does is that December opening day gives us a few months to get into kind of pre-opening events, soft openings, so that when we hit that spring season, we're hitting it, you know, a million miles an hour with programming already in place, and people have confidence that the facility's open in time for that season, so we'll be able to book events easier, book potential partners easier. So, long answer, short answer is yes.
Thank you. I want to go to, I want to go to Alderman Redpath real quick, because he may have something for you to address, and, and then we want to, we want to...
I think, I think we've heard quite a bit about this, and I, you know, the, the thing is, is that we have a phase in front of us, and we have to decide if we're going to go with the two-phase system, or we're going to make amendments. I, I know every one of us have, have different questions on how we're going to go about this, and, and I plan on bringing some amendments to it next week, and I really think it's important that everybody go thoroughly through this thing and, and decide on where we're going. They're up against the clock now, they're up against the clock, and it's, it's, it's our responsibility to make a... our responsibility to make a decision one way or another. We, if, the longer we keep delaying this, and we've been delaying it and delaying it and delaying it, not necessarily intentionally, but we have to make sure we're doing the right thing for the taxpayers. If we don't let these folks get underway, um, this thing's not going to be built by the time in the next couple of years. We need to get it rolling. And so please bear down, look at it, put it together. If we have to go to a one-phase system, then tell them that. We can't keep telling them, do this, do that. We got to make sure it's right. And as far as the financing is concerned, that was an area that we weren't clear on. And that's why, uh, that may be some of the delay because we weren't really sure that we were going to be subjected to part of the interest payments and that kind of thing. So that, that was, that was, that was new to us. But now we understand the projects and we understand, we got to make a decision if we want it to go one or two phases. I don't think that we should be submitting the full amount of money into phase one unless we know that phase two's definitely going to come. And I know that we've talked about that. So we got to, we got to wind this thing up and we got to get it so these folks can get it either underway or tell them, hey, we, we're not interested. One way or another, we got to make a decision.
I'm going to go, last question to Mr. Ju, Williams, Jr.
Yeah, well, he kind of hit on it, you know, between the phase one and guaranteeing that phase two. But, uh, to, uh, Corporation Council or maybe the sponsor, I don't know. So the community benefits agreement. So, so we're voting right now just to take this out of committee and next week, because I'm going to put a draft out that's been through Corporation Council. So all the, Aldermen have a whole week to look at the community, to propose community benefits agreement to see they can weigh in and decide what to do. But I'm, I'm concerned now when I'm discussing so I don't get confused, we're just taking this out of committee, but next week, we can amend? Is, is, is that what I'm hearing and how this will go?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I didn't want to miss the community benefits.
Boy, I like, go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, then Mr. Zerkel, and we're going to move forward.
Right. A couple of items. One, Director Dolls gave everybody a footprint of, uh, Sandusky. And if you look at it, and Steve Lucre can correct me if I'm wrong, the eight fields, the multipurpose fields are the large fields. They have two small baseball diamonds. So that's part of the 10, where these would be, uh, universal with regards to that. The other thing is, um, we went back and forth. We, you know, that's what I was saying, let's build it all. But the number, what are you comfortable with? I heard Aldermen that were only comfortable with 33%. When I said, we're going 50%, they go, what? And so that's what you have to be comfortable with.
Right.
And when I asked what the number is, we knew this facility's $65 million. That didn't include interest. Interest on this, you asked why the increase of the amount?
Right.
Interest?
Right.
And what's our interest just for phase one? If you finance it today, this is very important because rates are at an all-time low.
Right.
So if you were able to go out and get it today, I think it was based on 6% interest and what was the city's portion on phase one alone?
I think it was based on 4% interest and I think you're just between nine and 10 million dollars.
Yep, nine or 10 million dollars for us. So phase two, you know, even if we said, okay, we're doing phase two, we're going to do the whole unit, they're only going to finance the first part while they're being constructed. They're not going to go out and borrow the money until they're ready to use it. And so phase two's not going to happen for two years?
Three years.
Yep. And so then they're going to finance it. So what you're doing is saddling, if we make that commitment, you're saddling the next city council. And I've heard time and time again from everybody around this horse, you, oh, we don't want to saddle the next administration or the next city council. We want to make sure that we do not do that. So that's where phase one made sense. And that's where you generate the activity. And I think Corporation Council sent out a, uh, step-by-step, he'll ask him to go over it. But one of that, all the funds are held under an account with the city. And as Mr. Lucre pointed out, we have to sign off on it. So it's building the revenue. So, you know, if we earn whatever we're earning out there with sales tax dollars and everything that we're earning with hotel motel tax dollars goes into an account under the city and probably the developer's dual control. You cannot advance anything that doesn't go to the project cost. And so the excess is being built up. And then they would be able to determine this makes sense because the whole purpose of this developer's agreement is to lay out the parameters. They have a project labor agreement that they had to work through that took some time. But the whole purpose is so they can go get financing. They wanted to, this is, uh, one part was the private part, public partnership was unusual. The unusual part is for the city to make that commitment and then go out and get the investors. As we all know with TIP projects, anything else, it's gap financing. Usually you come in and say, here's what we have, here's our gap, we need the city to help out. This is the reverse. So that's very challenging. And so, uh, that's where we got to this point where they need to know what our commitment is. So then they can approach Shields, they can approach the private investors to see if they can raise some money. But the benefit for the financing is a hotel motel because that's generated now. It's being generated as we speak, once it's in place. And so, uh, that will help them get the financing sooner or later. But it's my understanding, Corporation Council can go through it, is, uh, the developer's agreement is what can be used as the footprint for phase two. It's not going to change, except for once they get the bid. So this is a high point for phase one, is my understanding. It could be lower depending on what the bids come in. But let's not kid ourselves, it's going to be cheaper to build today than it is tomorrow because you have American Rescue Plan dollars, you have all these incentives coming. And if people think that there's not going to be a slug of work out there and, uh, the price will go up because people are hungry now for projects. But once you start getting the road projects and everything else coming, uh, it's going to, I think the price is going to go up personally. I mean, you see it with the housing market right now. Look at the price of housing. It's gone up. So Corporation Council, can you answer the question with regards to how the funds will be dispersed and the, uh, the actions of the council with this? And does the developer's agreement, uh, does that cover both phases?
Uh, just... Yeah. And, and the other thing, and apologies if I, if I interrupted, you know, the other thing we've got to also keep in mind here and part of the, part of the reason to try, you know, but I think Steve said it, or Dirk as well as I did, is hey, what, what's the best structure to get this going? Is we are, so I've been in the sports tourism industry for 19 years now, uh, working on these types of projects specifically. And we have never seen the market this busy in terms of communities trying to get in, communities trying to take advantage of sports tourism to try to bring it to their cities. They see it as a recovery project. Uh, youth sports tourism was one of the very few things, uh, to actually not really see a downturn through the pandemic, except for an area, you know, obviously when facilities were closed. But as soon as they opened back up, facilities were full to whatever capacity was allowed by the local jurisdiction.
All right. Thank you.
And so the other thing we want to make sure with this project, with the amount of work that's been put in with, with, you know, the idea is there's nothing keeping other communities in your region and area from doing this until the first one goes in. And that first one typically acts as that barrier to entry. And so one of the things here too is the more we talk about this, but don't get started, the more bugs get planted in the ears of communities around the similar region. And so I, I think we don't want that to be lost is that, you know, time is of the essence from funding. And I a hundred percent agree with you. I mean, just, just in general, construction's always cheaper now than it is in the future. Um, I think we're seeing that, uh, multiplied tenfold, uh, right now with, with everything going on as well as funds available. But also just the opportunity can be there until it's not. And we just want to, you know, anything we can do to get this project moving so that people can look around the region and say, ah, well, Springfield's already done it and they're moving on this. So let's look for something else. You know, I think that's a very, very important component to the timing of all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. I appreciate you. Corporation Council, could you please ask the question and then we will move on?
Uh, certainly, yeah. The, the agreement, um, really, uh, this is an unusual circumstance where you got both private and public funding, as mentioned. Uh, it became clear through the discussions, it was always going to be in a phased-in approach over a period of years. It was never going to be built all at one time just because of the magnitude of the, uh, financing required. And so the way the agreement is put together, it establishes the funding source, which I think, uh, the developer has referenced earlier today. So when the funding source is in place, then the determination later, which is always really up to the developer, financial feasibility of going even to a phase two. That's there regardless of whether you are having an agreement that has phase one and phase two in it. It's always was going to be phased and it was always going to be subject to whether or not there could be financing, whether or not there was any money available. So the way that it's structured now was to put a limit on the initial phase of the amount of money based on the conversations that, uh, directions from the mayor and conversations with member, various council members. But what I would anticipate happening, because the agreement establishes the funding sources, uh, you'd end up with some kind of an addendum that would approve a phase two with a description, project expenses, et cetera, and simply extend the funding mechanism to cover that. So it's designed to be able to allow a, a council and one of the problems with this, and I think Steve would even agree with this, not, we just don't have all the numbers. And that has been a problem from the get-go. So this seemed to make the most sense in light of what they were actually going to do and the fact that they would have to come back for the phasing projects in any event, under any concept, they would have to come back. So this puts in place the funding mechanism. It gets the initial phase, which, uh, SFA advised the city was the, uh, perhaps the best bang for the buck, the one that makes the most sense to do initially. It could be done within, within the 15, 18 months, which is where that, uh, number did, uh, come from, the original schedule. But it makes it very easy for the developer to present phase two because the funding mechanism, mechanism is already in place.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Call the question.
Second. Uh, I have a, a motion on the floor to move 2020-538 to debate, uh, City Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed?
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Steve.
CWLP.
2021-177, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract UW-21-02-77, water main installation with Peterford Plumbing and Excavating LLC for a one-year term in amount not to exceed $721,414 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Yeah.
It's been moved in, uh, seconded for consent.
Who's seconded that, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Dunlap. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any discussion?
2021-198, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Sentinel Technologies Incorporated in amount not to exceed $56,638 for high availability network support for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move the consent.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded for consent. All, all in favor?
Aye.
2021-194, an ordinance approving a variance pursuant chapter 52.12A of the 1988 City of Springfield code ordinances as amended to chapter 52.12E regarding the responsibility for the costs associated with water main extension of service and authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $420,000 for water main extension project proposed properties located at 7200 and 7300 Woodland Trail Drive for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded for consent. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Public Works, 2021-179, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of RFP-PW-20-01 with Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating LLC, Perry-Broughton Trucking and Excavating Incorporated, and Rehan Brothers Doing Business as Sangamon Construction Company for cave-in repairs for an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move the consent.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded for consent. All in favor?
Question, sorry.
Sorry.
Is the description of this ordinance correct?
Corporate.
It looks like it's the same description we had for, um, 178.
Yeah, that's not the correct description.
Okay. So this is, this is just the standard plumbing kind of equipment that you guys need for...
For lateral repairs and sewer, sewer repairs and storm sewer inlet repairs.
I assumed that. I just wanted to make sure. It, it didn't feel like a internet security kind of a situation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conley. So we'll, we'll get that, uh, updated, Mr. Zerkel. Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Motion moves. Go ahead. 2021-180, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of RFP-PW-21-05 with Rehan Brothers Doing Business as Sangamon Construction Company and Perry-Broughton Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for street and alley repairs for an amount not to exceed $600,000 for the Office of Public Utilities and Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? All right, ayes have it.
2021-181, an ordinance authorizing a contract with 1015 Capital LLC for the purchase of real estate located at 1015 East Capital Avenue in an amount of $300,000 and closing costs in the amount of $3,000 for a total amount not to exceed $303,000 relating to Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment III for the Office of Public Works.
Do I have a motion?
Move for consent.
Second.
I got a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
2021-182, an ordinance authorizing condemnation of real property for the purpose of constructing Usable Segment III of the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved, uh, I do have a motion. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Ayes have it.
Just a question of, uh...
Go ahead, Alderman McMillan.
Question here. Uh, which, uh, is there an address for this property that we need to condemn? And, uh, do we have an ownership of that property?
Or is it two properties?
Parcel.
Yes, I'm Steve Warren from Hanson. Um, this is for all the properties on Usable Segment III. There's no specific. It's just in case we do need to. That way we don't have to come back to the council and ask again for specific ones.
Are you anticipating a problem?
Um, there may be one or two, yes.
I don't recall we've done a group condemnation like this previously.
Um, it's, we've done this before.
But we haven't done this on this council, that I recall.
Okay.
Hanson may have done this on other locations. So I just think if you can give us some more information about what's going on here, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Uh, do I have a motion?
You do.
Do you? All right. Uh, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
2021-183, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $11,100 for the relocation and personal property relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects located on parcel SR-0064 located at 1030 East North Grand Avenue relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, I have a motion in the second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
2021-184, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield and Illinois and Beth H. Hussey for the property located at 25 Westwood Lane.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to consent.
Have an agreement on debate?
To be on debate.
If you wouldn't...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
This one and the next one?
Okay, thank you.
That's because we have to do the public hearing on it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
2021-185, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 25 Westwood Lane.
Move for debate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Ayes have it.
2021-186, a resolution requesting temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route 55, Sixth Street from St. Joseph Street to Adeline Stevenson Drive for the Church of the Little Flower Street Festival on May 21st, 2021 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion?
Chair.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and Nate, maybe you can answer this question. I, because I recently had, um, an organization in my ward that wanted to close off a street for a, you know, fairly brief event. And, and I, I was told that we aren't doing block parties. We aren't authorizing that. So can I just ask, are we, are we kind of loosening that, those restrictions now? Or what's, what's the difference?
Yeah, we're in the process of taking, uh, applications for any events at this time. Um, that's, it's very fluid at this time. We're trying to be flexible and get the permits in if we do open up. And we are looking at obviously opening up, um, a little bit more, but in a responsible manner. Anybody that's, um, signing these documents is saying that they will comply with whatever COVID guidelines are in place per the Department of Public Health as well as the City of Springfield.
Thank you.
Um, and then this is actually a state route, so we just have to notify them. And the state is also issuing these types of permits. This time we verified with them and as long as, uh, they follow the proper COVID guidelines.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear because it's exciting to see we're starting to open up by closing roads off. It works.
Thank you, Director. It's been moved and seconded. We had discussion. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
No, no opposed? Ayes have it. No opposed? Eyes have it.
General City Business, 2021-87, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in an amount of $28,634 for personal property located on parcel SR-0068, 1122 North 10th Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-188, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $21,168.20 to Burton Brown, a Springfield Police Department employee for settlement of workman compensation claim for case number 20-WC-021930.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and, uh, moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-189, an ordinance authorizing payments in the amount of $26,983.25 to Charles Peters, a Springfield Police Department employee for settlement of workman compensation claim for case number 20-WC-005221.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-190, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D local licenses by one for Springfield Park District Doing Business as Bun Golf Course located at 2500 South 11th Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-191, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by one for the Springfield Park District Doing Business as Bun Golf Course located at 2500 South 11th Street.
Move to consent. Second.
Been moved in, seconded for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-192, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $63,100 for personal property located at parcel SR-0071, 1106 North 10th Street.
Move consent.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Eyes have it.
2021-193, a resolution requesting that the City of Springfield be included with other Illinois municipalities for consideration of receiving a casino license for the purpose of providing downtown economic development and job creation.
Thank you. Um, we, we're gonna, uh, I'm moved to hold this in committee. Uh, there needs to be some discussion from my understanding around that. Do we have a second on that? It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Chair.
Any discussion?
If we hold this in committee, can we kind of have a consensus? We're gonna hold this for two weeks then, until the next committee holds, so we don't get this sprung out of nowhere next, next week?
I would be open to that if it's the will of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's been moved, uh, and seconded to hold in committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Fair discussion, no opposed? Eyes have it. That's it? All right, that's it. All right, uh, any unfinished business? Any new business? Alderman.
Uh, real quick, uh, just a reminder for people that their grass is growing and it's time to start mowing. If you don't, the grass is growing, time to start mowing, and if you don't...
I like that.
Daryl's coming for you.
I like that.
Because I don't know how the rest of the council is, but I've been getting flooded with phone calls about people not mowing, and I turned quite a few in this week. Seems to be a lot of frequent flyers, and I believe this year, just a reminder, if they get sent to admin court, they immediately get a fine, they do not, they do not get out of their fine if they mow the day that they go to admin court. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Zirkel?
Under the, under the ordinance that was passed earlier, that is correct. Yes.
Okay, so people, I just kind of want to send out a warning to everybody so that they know. Thank you.
Alderman, this is...
Thank you, Chair. Um, I want to thank the Springfield Fire Department. I was at a neighborhood association meeting last night in Isles Park where we saw a house catch on fire. We witnessed the event, and I said, "Give him a couple seconds and they'll be here," and we heard sirens right away. So I witnessed a fire in progress, and the work of the Springfield Fire Department was impressive. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, just to build upon Alderman Hanauer's comments, we see this in more probably in rural areas, but it does happen in cities as well as regarding blowing grass out onto the roads. Obviously, that's not permitted. It's very dangerous for bicyclists, very dangerous for motorcycles. So just, Darrell, Director Harris is watching those as well, so everybody just remember to sweep up afterwards. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I definitely agree with that.
Big bad Daryl.
Good man.
Whatever. Anyone else? Good mayor?
Yep. Tomorrow's the State of the City Chamber Lunch at 11:30, and so I'll make remarks at noon, and it's a box lunch, so you can take it to go, or you can join, I think virtually as well. But the other item is Bonnie Drew wanted to come up and address the council, she could briefly, however long she wants, I guess.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to make, to let you all know simultaneously that effective Friday, I will be retiring from the City of Springfield after almost 30 years. And I want to thank all of the citizens and all of my coworkers. If your issues weren't handled timely, or if you didn't get the answer that you want, I hope that you at least thought that they were handled respectfully, honestly. And I would be remiss not to mention Judy Madonia. She, 30 years ago, gave me the opportunity to start work in the Treasurer's Office. And I remember every morning I would hear a clip-clop coming down the hallway. "Gottmorgen, Bonnie." Mayor Langfelder would greet me almost every morning, and it's so surreal that 30 years later, I'm retiring under Mayor Langfelder. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And your dad told you to fire her.
Yeah, thank you for remembering that. Actually, just real quick, you know, little history here, but Bonnie was going to run for Treasurer. I told her when I was elected, I was glad she didn't run, because it's hard to run against somebody in the office, but she was the Deputy Treasurer at that time, and of course, everybody that helped me out, and my closest mentor, my father said, "Well, you need to get rid of her, you, you know, can't trust, you know, individuals that work against you." And that's just not how we're carved out. So gave her the benefit of the doubt, and lo and behold, she proved herself, and she stuck with me, and I appreciate all the great work she's done to serve the citizens of Springfield. That's what it's all about. I think deep down, that's what, everybody has that sincere desire, so we really appreciate her service nearly 30 years. That's pretty good. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Uh, I just would like to say, uh, one, one quick thing while I was on, Alderman Hanauer, thank you for bringing up the grass, because you actually spurred my, my memory on a question that I needed to ask Corporation Counsel. Can you, if it's not too hard to explain or take too long now, can we talk about our, our city right-of-way grass and who's responsible to cut that? And I, theoretically, I would cut it.
Respect to where are you referring, sir?
Our city right-of-way grass that's between the street and the sidewalk?
The, actually, the homeowner is supposed to do that under our ordinances. The part, little parkway area between where the sidewalk is and typically the curb of the road.
All right, thank you. So that's something else we need to make sure that, that that is.
Also in the alleys, you know, if there's grass along in the alleys.
I don't have alleys.
And maybe Mr., Mr., Mr....
But the, the homeowner is supposed to also do it both, both on the road and in the alley, you know, joining their property, in other words, at the back of their property.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alderman Williams. What if there is no homeowner? You know, it's like, it's a lot, or do we, do we research who owns the lot?
The property owner is responsible, however, if there is grass and it goes through Public Works, goes to AC Court, with, the city will end up cutting it, and then there will be liens filed against the property.
All right. And then my, my final, my final thing that we, that we have to talk about, I believe there's a gentleman in the, the audience that's going to talk about it, but, you know, we, we have a situation over here with this, this Family Dollar on, on, in my ward, and we have to fix it. Not only that one, with this gas station. I would, I would like to lean on my more experience, Alderman, to ask, what, what do we do about a, you know, what are we going to do about businesses that have owners that are just not living up to, to our standards? We, we can't, I can't have, um, you know, our elders not wanting to go into these stores because people are hanging out, you know, and, 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 you know, I, we can't keep sending our, our, our officers over there, we're just spinning our wheels with it. So, so why don't we get a little stronger on, on businesses like this? Because we, we've already taken one step and went to the courts on one, you know, Family Dollar, I'm really disappointed, this is a national chain. So it's, it's, it's getting ridiculous, and, you know, it's overdue time for that to have a facelift and, and, and argue with me. I don't know what the rest of them look like, but it's overdue time for them to put some money in their, in their, in their building and, and act like they care about it. I'm, I'm tired of getting complaints, I'm tired of calling chief about it, I'm tired of, of, of feeling like that, like, and, and, you know, it, it just makes us, you know, as aldermen, all of us, when we have these situations and we just, you know, got to keep beating a dead horse, it makes us look like we're not doing nothing, it makes us look like we don't care, and we do care, and I know the city cares, and I, I just want us to, you know, look for more ways to really come down on, on, on business owners who are just not living up to what we want to see in the city. We want it to grow, we're talking about casinos, we're talking about all of this magnificent stuff that, you know, our younger generation, even younger than me, really want to see us get to, right? But we can't get to that with, we got people who just do not care, uh, but, but, but about this, this dollar. And, and at some point in time, we, we, we have to really impose on people to really care about our community. At this point in our goals, I just want them to care about this thing in the community, at least cut the grass and, and give back a little bit at least, but, you know, we, we're getting in the habit, we, we got some people that's been there in our communities for a while, that, that just do whatever they want to do, and, you know, we, we keep spinning our wheels with it. I just think it's time to, you know, put a stop to it for once. So I would just ask all of you to, you know, use, use some of that experience and help me out and, and send me some suggestions on what we can do to get past this. I, I, you know, I, I ask of that of you. Thank you. Uh, any citizens from the community signed up to speak? Clark Lesko?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ahmed Binbeila.
Good evening and thank you. I am Ahmed Binbeila. I'm here because, um, I was concerned about something, Mr. Mayor, that like you had the vision to, to shepherd, and that is closing Adams Street and allowing Buzzbomb to be able to have their festivities there almost every weekend. It has been a boon, as far as I'm concerned, for the area, and I don't know who the alderman is for that neighborhood, but it's a plus and not a minus. I'm here because I was told over Mother's Day weekend, which is just the other day, that it's in jeopardy of losing the shutdown thing that you have in place. If that is so, do not do that. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. You've got a good thing going there, they are bringing people downtown. I had a booklet in my hand of visitors to the city. There are people that I met last, during the shutdown of the pandemic, there were people that were there who were from all points of, of this, of the United States. They were spending money, the, the places in the area like JP Kelly's, people were walking down there and participating to take away that venue of being able to sit out there and, and the jobs that, with the musicians that are there that are playing for tips. It would be just, just not good. And maybe it's, it's the fact that I represent the Chicago Jazz Orchestra, and musicians and people who are part of the gig economy have really had no work. You have allowed a lot of young musicians in this town to be able to work, even though they were just playing for tips. They were working, but people were there and they were fellowshipping with each other. We were meeting people from all over the country, but it was an outdoor event, and it was in the summer, and now I'm, I'm told that like you might be considering taking that privilege that we have away. I urge you, sir, and one of the reasons why I voted for you is because you were visionary and you wanted to do something with downtown and bring more people here. My alderman is sitting there, who is another champion of doing what, something great for the downtown area. You must not take away that privilege of having that street shut down and that venue to be able to participate. Uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, excuse me, sorry for not recognizing you before, because I didn't recognize you with a cap and a mask on, so from Bywood Apartments, welcome.
Thank you. I see you're sitting next to beauty.
Mr.?
We're between two roses.
Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, would you like to respond?
I appreciate the comments and, you know, what's happened is, one, the street was shut down because, uh... Sorry. One, the streets were shut down because during the pandemic, we were trying to do outdoor venues. And so with regards to that, one of the items we will be doing is parklets. So during that discussion, you know, it was decided, DSI had worked with Buzzbomb and the other people on that portion of Adams Street. Unfortunately, they didn't engage the others on the other side of Adams Street. And what's disturbing, and I will say, because I don't want any backlash, but I know there's been some calls being made to the other side, and I think, you know, everybody should understand during a pandemic, that's a time for respect and understanding. And unfortunately, I think what's happened is people look at it under their own viewpoint, not you, I'm not talking about you, but in general, how do we, how are we successful, especially with downtown? So, you know, how I view downtown, how that's going to change, is with the parklets, is with the outdoor dining. You've seen it happen in the bigger cities. I thought closing the street at night, you know, with regards to in conjunction with the farmer's market, made somewhat sense if the retailers would agree to it and others, but it so happened that not everything was locked in. Some of the retailers that we thought had the, that were supporting it, thought it was only temporary. Uh, it did start before the farmer's market, so it was a tough decision, but the ones being impacted, you mentioned JP Kelly's, and there's others down the street, and there's arguments going back and forth what their impact is. Well, we'll be able to prove that, because it will be in the data that we collect. Because right now, we're allowing Buzzbomb and that portion of Adams Street to remain closed, and it'll probably be for at least a month, if not longer, it depends when they get the parklets in. So JP Kelly's can monitor how much foot traffic, how much business they get. And then, when we install the parklets and we open up the street, then you would be able to tell what activity they have. But in the meantime, music can go on. I offered a solution. You could put a small band underneath the public market venue, because we had complaints about the sound going to the apartments, face the music the other way, towards the people. And so, you know, they still couldn't use the parking lot. I think now's the time for innovation and figure out how can we work together to really make downtown that wow factor, just not for that portion of Adams Street, but for all of downtown. And people say, well, we're bringing all these people down there. Yes, but, you know, we bring a lot of people down for the Levitt Concert Series on the Y Block, but they don't necessarily walk in other areas. So that's what we're working with downtown Springfield with, the other merchants, Buzzbomb and others, I mean, we're all trying to work together to make downtown what it can be, where it's a walkable, enjoyable environment for everybody. But that's where it's happening, but from this point forward, I did say for the duration, and that's gotten lost in the solution, every Sunday, they can close, that street will be closed for a rusey brunch. But that's, everybody just focuses on the weekends, they're not closed, but they will be closed for probably at least a month, and then we'll see what happens after that once the parklets are put in place. And then every Sunday, they will be able to set up that venue that they so choose, and we'll see, what we want is all of downtown thriving and working together to make that environment that everybody wants. And we do appreciate you being part of it, especially with the music scene. So thank you.
Mr. Clark, any others?
Yes, Edward.
Edward, Edward, Edward. Mr. Clark?
Alice Ramey.
Alice. Please address the chair, Ms. Alice.
I hope you all had a beautiful Mother's Day. I know I did. I was gambling, and I would prefer to gamble in Springfield, Illinois. But I want to thank everybody here for trying to get the sports arena. I've been to a lot of them, and I know that they do bring in the money, they do help out, they have a lot of things going on, and I really think that it's gonna be a blessing to this city in a lot of ways. I have a complaint. I don't know what you guys are gonna do about these slum lords that don't fix their apartments or their houses and leave them go. I have one that's next door to me that's had a roof and railing come down, the gutter come down, and all the stuff in the gutter is over in my yard. So they said they were gonna have it fixed, they had somebody come out there, look for the roof. I have not seen anybody out there, and that roof's been that way for five years. Now, we're gonna have to do something with this property. We have to make sure the grass is getting cut, making this city look like a city and not like a backstreet place, okay? And everybody's trying very, very hard to do that, but it doesn't seem like anybody has any respect for what they're not doing. And it's very hard. You can sit up here and talk about getting this done and getting that done, but the main thing is to make this city thrive, to make it really grow. And I think everybody up here realizes that they don't want to walk out in their front yard and have trash or have their grass blowing in the street. And I think that's very terrible. I understand that we have an ordinance about that. I take care of my lot and my house grounds, okay? Make sure they're all cut. Also, clean out the sewer where the water goes down, and people don't clean it out when they haven't cut their grass, so it floods. We have to do something about it and not give them a slap on the hand and say, oh, we'll get it done. That's not what's gonna happen. If we're living this city, we're paying taxes in this city, then take care of your property properly, properly. Get a lawnmower out, pair of scissors, I don't care, you know? Get it done, because I'm tired of going through Ward Six, Ward Eight, and all of it, and they all look like nobody cuts their grass. Now, the epidemic didn't stop you from cutting your grass, you know, you could go outside and cut your grass. I mean, it's time that we start taking care of this city, okay? And whoever mows the highway, they're working, they're doing their job. But who's mowing the grass that these people don't pay for? Mayor, you got anybody to sign up to cut the grass that Public Works need to be cut? I already talked to Father, okay, I already talked to him, he's gonna take care of that part, but don't you think you better have someone that's qualified to do it? You know? And you give the Republic garbage people two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars to pick up the leaves, I haven't seen them pick up one, okay? I still got mine out in the front. And my branches. So we want to do right, but if we don't get the people there both to do it, do it right, then what's the use of paying them? I could use the money, and I could drive a truck, an eighteen-litre, no problem, okay? And thank you for bringing it up, because I was gonna bring it up anyway, and thank you for trying to get it in here and keep it on the ball, and have fun when you get out there and hit a baseball. I hate baseball, but I worked for the Hitting Center for eleven years, and I got to like it. I do hit one ball, that's all I hit, okay? Basketball is my game, and football, okay? And thank you guys for listening to me, hope that you understand that it's time you get an ordinance that every house that's not cut down will get charged four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
We're rolling in it, Alice.
I also want to thank our police department, and I'll tell you why. While I was up there, it not only cost me the money I was gambling, it cost my car. Somebody wanted my car, so they stole it. And the police department up there in Peoria needs to take lessons from this police department down here. I have to tell this because it was really weird, okay? They came in, they took my information, they asked me, when did I park my car? I said, Friday night. I said, okay, I don't look at my car after that one, I'm taking the shoulder to the gambling place to put my money.
Yes, ma'am.
So they came and they act like we were the ones that stole our car. They had no manners whatsoever. Our police department has manners, and they respect, and the fire department too. So keep that tension growing down, Joe, down, down, down.
Thank you, Ms. Alice.
And you have a beautiful day.
Thank you, you have a beautiful day, too.
And remember, you have to work together with respect and give everybody else respect too in return.
I agree. Mr. Zirkel, any executive session? Corporation Council, any executive session?
No, sir.
All right, seeing nothing else to come before this committee, I would adjourn. All right, this meeting is adjourned.